Otherwise engaged in more entertaining pursuits. As Vice President, I'll call the November seventeenth regular meeting to order. Note that we have all directors accounted for with the note of President Goodner being at City Hall. And her and Superintendent Corrigan will be joining us at some point in the evening, Lord Mullin. So. Anyone want to read the mission?
At Decora Community School District, we embrace student learning and well-being as our fundamental purpose. We will, in partnership with our students, families, and community, make the world a better place. The mission of the Decora Community School District is learning, thriving, creating our legacy. The vision of the Decora Community School District is. Decora Community School District will be a collaborative, innovative, learning center organization empowering students to embrace their personal strengths and create their future.
Thank you. One item of all business, the energy conservation policy, which I understand has been reviewed. By Curtis Johnson, our facilities manager, and. It has been resubmitted for a second reading. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the new version of eight oh two point seven?
Much improved, much more comprehensive. And it includes long range planning as well as day-to-day operational strategies, which I really appreciate and think that is something that we as the board should be doing.
Think this moves a great length towards what was discussed the last time. I like the detail, the level of. The depth of. The point-by-pointness of the plan as it's listed here.
The one thing that I understand is that Curtis in reaching out to some of the manufacturers and vendors of our HVAC equipment. Has learned that they will before we come and kind of do a presentation on. You know, hey, here's the latest and greatest, let us tell you how to maximize. Efficiency, let's see, Sean nodding, that's your understanding as well.
Energy audit. Pretty charged, which is great.
Is this something we need to pass tonight?
Uh, this is the second reading, so yeah.
I wonder if we should wait until we have everyone here to look at this, since this is quite a change in our policy from what we're doing now.
The, in discussing things with Cindy, we're hoping to move things along somewhat, take care of the. Items through the presentation. Because we might be sitting. A while, yes. So I would.
Oh, I only may necessarily table it to once you're there here, but give it to a different month.
I don't know what our onboard practices would be, but listening at the city council meeting tonight, it sounds like tabling is. Till the next meeting, it can't be till later in your own meeting, you can't delay it till later unless we were.
Yeah, if we, we could make a motion to amend the agenda shortly and move this back. But if we table it, it's. No, it's.
The second reading, yeah.
And which is what I'm saying, proposing actually, but.
Yeah, I don't have a meeting with the pre-board meeting and sounded like they kind of pulled this and. Talked to everybody and I'm guessing Cindy had, I'm okay with either way, whether I think this is a good document and if we are ready to move forward. I'm fine with that, if we feel like we need to bring it to next month. Don't think that would be a big deal either.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm not going to put forward a motion to table, and it sounds like I'm not going to second, so.
Oh, I didn't, I haven't heard that, Erin's. I'll put forward a motion that we table the second reading of code number eight oh two point seven on energy conservation. Until our next meeting.
I will second that.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? You guys can deal with the next month.
Well, that'll be in your own business, so.
Uh, he'll get to do it next month, too.
Let me see if I show up. Okay.
You already got one extra meeting out of the.
Uh, so next, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to move to discussion.
What's that?
In talking with Tim this morning, in review of some of the new business we're looking at, I'm curious if we could move items C through F. Above A and B. D particularly pertains to exactly what Dana's going to present to us in a few minutes here, so following her presentation directly with.
Okay, I'm sorry, repeat that, your proposal is?
To move items C through F to the beginning of the new business section.
So just moving that under nine, move C through CD and E and F before A and B?
Correct.
I think that's a very good idea. I think this, Cindy and Tim will be back by then and.
Consider that a second?
Some of our discussion.
Should I consider that a second?
Oh, yes, that's a second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 So I thought we already had a.
We already had a.
And that was in the discussion.
I seconded already, so that was part of the discussion.
Brad, yeah, Brad made the motion and Erin seconded, and then you had discussion.
And I'm making a motion that we amend.
Okay.
The agenda as proposed to ship items, yes.
And I will second that amendment, thank you.
Uh, next consent agenda, does anybody have any concerns, do you think you're allowed even to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this is the time for open forum communication from the public. And I see lots of people that look like they would like to speak up, so I see we have a list. First, the long no, well, first signature is Melanie Tate.
So let's just go first.
Okay, so this must be Carolyn Corbin. Okay, well, we'll defer to Melanie till after you, thank you.
Dear members of the Decora Community School Board, my name is Carolyn Corbin, I go by she/her. My own children attended the K through twelve Decora schools. A group of Decora citizens have joined with Public Schools Strong. And Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement in support of a resolution to fully fund public schools. The resolution urges the governor of Iowa and the state legislature to fully fund public schools by an annual five percent increase of state supplemental aid. To maintain an income gap for ESAs, to phase out the ESA voucher program over the next five years. And to use public funds for public schools only. At your August meeting, you discussed your legislative priorities to include mental health, teacher recruitment, professional development and retention, private school choice, and supplemental state aid. So this resolution speaks to those same priorities. Our group has gathered over two hundred and seventy signatures, which is greater than the ten percent of voter turnout required to bring a resolution to request to us to. For a school board to vote on. We respectfully request that this resolution be added to the school board agenda for December in accordance with Iowa Code two seventy nine point eight B. We encourage you to discuss support and vote to pass this resolution. We believe that every child has a right to a high-quality public education. Decora has always been a community for education, is valued and respected. We understand how critical our schools are to the community's future generations. This is why we personally believe we must use our public funds for public schools. The patron of this district want to partner with you in sending that message to the governor and to the legislature. Thank you for serving on the school board and giving your time to serving this community and to our students. Please know you have the community support to raise your voices and pass the resolution.
Um, would you present that to Darlene then? And then some that would just be added to the December agenda. Assuming the requisite signatures and everything, and in any event, I don't know.
Speaking of those records.
Yes.
I have them right here.
That's petitions and all the signatures.
Yeah, it probably comes as no surprise that the people who sit up here couldn't agree more. And, yeah. Probably in the December meeting when this comes up, I'll probably sitting where you are, so. So thank you for your work in laying that groundwork. Anything else?
I was just going to stand up and read the resolution out briefly if I could. A school board resolution urging the Iowa governor and the Iowa state legislature to fully fund our public schools and phase out the education savings accounts, or ESAs. Where, there's a lot of whereas's in here. Whereas ninety-one percent of Iowa students are enrolled in public schools, and whereas public schools are universally accessible and do not discriminate. And whereas public schools are accountable to local communities through nonpartisan, democratically elected school boards. And whereas the state of Iowa has underfunded public schools for decades, averaging just two percent annual increase of SSA since two thousand and twelve. And whereas Iowa is experiencing one of the worst teachers shortages in the country. And whereas private schools receiving ESAs are not held to the same accountability, transparency, and legal standards as public schools. And whereas Iowa's ESAs defund our public schools and have cost Iowa taxpayers one hundred and twenty-nine million in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Two hundred and eighteen million in twenty-four, twenty-five. And a cost of three hundred and fifteen million in twenty-five, twenty-six, with all income eligibility caps removed. Whereas the vast majority of private schools in Iowa are religious and publicly funding them blurs the line between separation of church and state. And whereas independent studies in Indiana, Louisiana, Ohio, and Washington DC. Show that student performance and achievement go down as private school voucher programs expand. And whereas all of us, including future generations, benefit from strong public schools. Because they've helped make our country far more equal, educated, and democratic. Now therefore be it resolved by the Decora Community School Board of Education, number one, the Decora Community School Board. Um, School Board of Education, to hereby urge the governor of Iowa and the state legislature to fully fund the public schools. By an annual five percent increase of the state's supplemental aid rate. But, and number two, the Decora School Board of Education to hereby petition the governor of Iowa and the state legislature. To keep the income cap in place for ESA, ES, ESAs, and phase out the program over the next five years and to use public funds for public schools. That's the petition, and I brought a copy, the non-copy. And I brought a copy for all of you.
My only critique in that would be, I don't like the term educational savings account. No one's saving anything, they're just being given money to spend however they please, calling it a voucher like it is.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, anything else for public comment? Uh, yeah, the annual progress report presentation from Dana.
Up here, thanks to Sean. I shared out, and that's in the board faggot, the actual report, which has a lot more information in it than what I'll highlight tonight. That annually, school districts in Iowa are required to develop the products report, based on the state of the district. Want to call that. So the APR includes data in the areas of enrollment, attendance, achievement, and behavior. It also includes special development that we offer to our staff and supports offered to students. So as part of this year's report. We've added a section on extracurricular activities to highlight the wide range of opportunities that are available to our students. And the impressive rate at which they participate. Um, this addition reflects our commitment to educating the whole child. Though I will not be covering everything that's in the report tonight, I do want to touch on just a few highlights. So in the area of enrollment, over the past three years, we have seen a substantial decrease in our free school enrollment. And really a decrease overall in our student enrollment. District free and reduced numbers continue to rise. And though Decora continues to be predominantly white, we are seeing an increase in our Hispanic student population. Our extended learning program numbers continue to be quite high. And the percentage of students qualifying for special education services, though up just slightly, really is remaining fairly stable. The Iowa statewide assessment of student progress serves as the academic achievement measure for the, for Iowa districts. And so within this report, you will see many. Data measures that are related to that assessment. The ISAT assesses third through eleventh graders in the area of PLA, mathematics, and then fifth, eighth, and tenth graders in the area of science. So our first view of ISAT achievement is by grade. Um, basically looking at third grade compared to third grade from one year to the next, or tenth to tenth. Proficiency levels ranged from seventy-three percent to ninety-three percent in the area of PLA, while science ranged from seventy-nine percent to ninety percent. We typically see lower proficiency levels at the, the lower grades, and then by the time they get to high school. We often see the upper eighty percentile to nineties. Um, math, I'm going to take a different look here, because this is what stood out to me. When we look grade to grade, we can also follow a very low cohort over the years, and what jumped out to me was. Last year's testing from the year previous, every cohort except one increased their proficiency level. So that was really great to see, the area within was our fourth graders going into fifth grade, and historically across the state of Iowa, we see a dip at that grade level every year. We also report by our achievement band, those are advanced proficient and not yet proficient. So these graphs here show our district overall achievement last year. And you will see that all the proficiency levels are average across the district is that mid-eightieth percentile. And we also have a very high percentage of students that reach advanced status, higher than many other districts. We also review our achievement by various subgroups, like Plons listed there. Uh, because our enrollment is low in most racial subgroups, really the only two that we have any information on are the white student population and the Hispanic population. We continue to see an achievement gap between our special education students and non-special education students, our English learners and non-English learners. Um, in our free and reduced population and those that do not qualify for free and reduced. Our goal is always to close that gap. Our goal is always to close that gap. So the same is true when we compare the achievement of Hispanic student population with that of the white student population. And we continue to see a trend in the area of gender with females outperforming males in the area of PLA. And males outperforming females in the area of math. So the final achievement comparison when we talk about ISAT is the district's performance in comparison to the state. And our local education agency and historically Decorah has and continues to substantially outperform both of those entities. So we think of our scores last spring, so during the twenty four, twenty five ISAT testing period. Our district scored approximately thirteen percent higher than the state in the LA. Fourteen percent higher in math and seventeen percent higher in the area of science. We do look at some additional academic indicators, so some highlights within that information is that our graduation rate continues to be very high. We have eighty five percent of students last year reporting or seniors, I should say, reporting that they intended to pursue post-secondary education or some sort of training. After high school. We have a high number of students that participate in advanced placement classes. Um and a high percentage of those students earn a three or higher on their AP exam. Of the two hundred and twelve AP exams that we had in the Decorah district last year, our overall average score was three point nine. Which is really great.
What'd you say the number was? What was the total number of tested?
Two twelve. Um and then I wanted to highlight this ACT data specifically because it's a really impressive graph. Um and it speak volumes by our district. High le- has high levels of academic achievement. So while the we are seeing dips and declines nationally and in the state on ACT uh performance. The district achievement is trending upward.
Do you have any information about the percent of students but uh grade who are at the high school who are taking ACT tests? Is that continuing to stay?
I would love to turn that into a graphic.
Does it continue to be a similar?
Somewhat variable that it's somewhat consistent in terms of the percentage. Of course, we aim for the percentage to be higher um speaking. Um many students take it because a good number of our students are going to a four-year college, so. Um there's always room for improvement, but a good number of our kids are already taking that reason.
And then we'll switch to attendance. Um over the past few years, especially following the closure because of COVID. Decor's crown, counting as a team rate has increased. Um though it really remains lower than the state average and. Overall, our attendance rate is strong, so we're seeing some increases, but still a very strong attendance rate. During the twenty four, twenty five school year, we saw our district attendance rate increase for the first time since the closure. And most notably, that was at the high school, middle school levels. So that was great to see. So overall, Decorah district has many things to be proud of. Um from the high performance, high activity participation, low overall behavior concerns, good attendance. A strong committed staff. Um we've got a lot of really good things going for our district. Um and just keep shining every year. Did you have any specific questions on the entire report?
What the standardized tests are we using now? Are we using ISATs and um? What's our second measure?
Yeah, so you don't actually have to have a second measure anymore. That's no longer law, but we still use MAP. Um measures of academic progress at middle school and high school and some of our fourth grade when trying to determine who should be. Extended learning program. Um we also have FAS testing that's required at from kindergarten through sixth grade.
I know that I have many questions. I think your report. Tonight summarizes the data you shared with us already um. Which is both incredible and impressive. Testament to all of the work you guys are doing on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Well, I would just like to commend all of the the teachers, the staff and the administration for um. For meeting the needs of every individual student because that's really where the staff release students to um. To have this level of of achievement and um. I really do feel like Decorah schools meet students for um for for what they need. Um at at any given grade level and challenges the students who need the extra challenges and then we have twenty plus percent of students who qualify to the LP. The program that are scoring, I have these ACT tests. I mean, that's an incredible number and I do think that we meet the needs of those students. And when they get to the high school, I think that they are um showing that they can really handle multiple AP classes which they are taking. And at the same time, put on incredible performance for the whole community, which the whole community is talking about this week. Um so I just want to just have show that appreciation for one in the school.
I agree completely. For having a son that went through struggles in early grades and now in college, does he do great, so.
And one who could really sing and dance too.
I think the most encouraging thing is seeing that the COVID dip and bounce back. Has been good, you know, we haven't dipped and stayed there. You know, hope that offers, hope that. Um all the students who are unfortunate enough to be impacted by that will in the long run. Not be dramatically affected.
One concern I do have is the enrollment. So since the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, I did the math and uh we decreased a hundred and fifty seven students. So I invest from a variety of um of of reasons. Do you have any insights into what those top reasons are?
Well, let anyone jump around this one too, but I think um we probably have a number of things, just both grade and wish county is down. Cost of housing in Decorah, I think that's a lot of those young families that that can't settle here. Um if you guys have anything to add.
Some of the ESAs, some of them, yeah, we've heard. Enrollment at the elementary level, the emergence of online academies in the late of the pandemic. Uh I'm wanting students to maybe reticent or reluctant to engage in positional school. Um at the secondary level has become a thing. Um gets you to try to work with families to provide options and opportunities that. Uh there are some new things that have emerged in the last five years that have made it more challenging. Yeah, I would say your report does not sugarcoat, but the outcomes are quite glowing, so. Appreciate the summarization. I thought you you poked into the one detail that I was like, yes, we have that dip between forty and thirty. But if you look back historically, year over year after year here, not just. But it's like, that's.
Yeah, it's across the state.
That's what happens. You start transitioning from one style or another.
A different set of curriculum.
Yes.
Right, is that we have a different set of curriculum between both things of reading now. We go from the elementary curriculum to a different textbook and.
Yeah, we uh we do now. It's just more change from computation to to more. We want demonstrative versus. And that's like you told Dana, that's what we see across the state too, so you know, we always take that. With the grain of salt, so to speak, yeah, middle school, right? And then we look at our numbers as they go from fifth grade to eighth grade and we're really happy with our our product accent of high school and so. Um we know our students, what they're able to do when they go to high school, so that's kind of how we look at it. So definitely so.
Testing um from kindergarten to first grade, there's always a dip and that's historically been across the state. Um it's just the test changes. So really influences the scores.
And developing, I think, with kids mature at different ages at multiple big transition times.
Okay, well, the president has joined us, so.
I hear that there was the approved reordering of our agenda, so now. If I heard interpreted what Ron said correctly, we're on item C.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move to item C, approval of the twenty twenty five and twenty six. Deporta Community School District CTE Advisory Committee.
Probably might be to me, uh not meant, uh so Iowa code. Uh to a to the eighty point nine requires uh the board to approve of. Council of people that represents any any school district that receives funds for CTE, which we do through Perkins and RPP. Um shall approve a uh basically a career technical advisory program and council. Um which is what this is, so if you pull up the attachment. Um our, this is a kind of become an annual exercise at this point, but. Each strand, we have four strands in CTE, agriculture, business, industrial tech and culinary. Um has a variety of representatives, so some of the people you see listed on that attachment are. Local business owners uh and business leaders. Uh you also have each strand, a male and a female student will spend selected by the teacher. Um in addition, of course, you have um other representatives, including our CTE teachers. That burns a piece on ADA. Um last year, Carol, I believe you were our representative on the board, um so we put you as a. Person that could be and or another board of Ed rep, but that was we decided to change. Um NICC who we have partnerships with. And uh Matty Fun and Kek who we've been working with to provide and boost work-based learning opportunities and. Career learning opportunities for our students. Um and so. This first meeting, uh they have a fall and they have a spring meeting, so their fall meeting will be in December. And so we wanted to put this before the board before that meeting so that the people that show up to that. Are approved by the board um as required by code. Um this group also does help us with our district career academic plan, which we would look to approve in May. As another one of the board's new annual exercises um that's required by date, so. Um would recommend approval um of this team. Is there any transition um obviously on the student side, but is there a transition in adults that are? Yeah, that's a good question. Uh we do have a new business teacher this year, Eric Trenton. Um she um replacing Melissa Marcel from last year. Um other than that, say.
Person from top lane.
Yeah, sorry, yes, for businesses, I'm not entirely. There's probably a few changes, but many of them are the same from what I remember last year, but there may be one or two new ones that they've reached out to.
Well, I make a motion to approve the uh twenty five, twenty six CTE Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second discussion. I'm just gonna comment, it's an incredible program and thank you for doing it.
I I I will check the. And I'm happy to be the CTE representative from the board, um at least for the first meeting and then when we do ours. Last month.
We'll have our organization.
But at this point, let's keep my name on there and then that may I should have stayed from so.
Um I don't think this, I don't think it's necessary to abstain from voting, so I think as the motion has been stated, if that covers.
No.
Okay, so we'll move to about all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is item D, approval of the annual progress report for twenty twenty four and twenty five.
I'll move, we approve the annual progress report for twenty four, twenty five and share our deep thanks to our administrators, staff and teachers.
I'll say could hold it.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E is approval of early graduation request.
So Naomi Peddler is our only person, a student that's applied for this. Uh this would be under board policy five oh five point six. They're required to notify the principal um and some letter of writing which you have there. And typically in our handbook, we prefer that they do this uh before the December board meeting, which is what this is. Uh this student Naomi has done track with all the graduation requirements. Um she's been praised or advised that, you know, once she becomes an an alumnus, which would happen in January. Um she wouldn't be able to participate in spring activities. I don't believe that's her, it wasn't her plans anyway. Uh but that information has been shared. Of course, you can still come to prom and all the senior related events related to graduation. Uh but would not be able to do uh any activities. She's aware, so again, uh approval was recommended.
I mean, that we approve this graduation request or early graduation request for Naomi Peddler.
Uh and we should add, subject to successful completion of all requirements.
Pending successful completion of all requirements.
I'll second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is item F, approval of the certified enrollment. And as. Yeah, um we're down again, so we are twenty nine students lower. This year for our certified enrollment than we were last year. As we discussed previously, um there's a, there's a number of reasons why this is happening. We we have been conscious of this um drop in enrollment. Last year we lost, it was a drop of. Nearly fifty students, I can't remember the exact number. Was it forty six?
Nice to just put out twenty six.
And that had to do, there there was a huge change with um. Just school accreditation process, for example, the Montessori school used to run through our homeschool assistance program. Now they are completely independent, so you know, there's a number of factors. I think um there's there's demographic data in our community that we have no, we do not have control over the birth rate. We do not have control over housing prices in Decorah um. But we're on, we have a new school on the horizon. And um that will have a preschool built into that new school. I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm also not. Naive, we've been very honest and we changed by initial advisors, we've been working with Travis Squires to um. Forecast and plan five years into the future, so um. That's my take.
Yeah, and it's certainly not unique. Um Cedar Rapids obviously being a much larger district, but they lost six hundred and sixty students this year. That's gonna be a fight and. From what I've heard, and I believe from other superintendents from those other community means. Unless you're in the DuBois metro area, you. You lost as well.
Specifically won't keep.
Yeah, or yeah.
I see, as we make our decisions, given this reality, we um. I think we mostly all will be in agreement that uh making those tough decisions, if we need to make any type of cuts that that we take them as far away. From um student learning as as possible.
And I think we have in recent history. Active responsibility with the future in mind. Um to really focus on a teacher to student. Connection.
Reality is there's no more fat to cut.
That is accurate. Um the other piece of data, which I think was shared quite succinctly earlier by through public comment. Um the number that jumps out to me is the number of students who are opting for ESA programs. Uh that grew fifty nine last year, our enrollment dropped twenty nine. So if you do some math there.
And uh Tim mentioned in the pre-board meeting that that number may be a little false because. The funding, there's people that got approved for funding this year that may not have got approved last year, so they may be attending those schools, but.
Yes, we're, and I think that's the clarity on it, that more people are eligible to apply um this year than last.
So that's, yeah.
Based on the income level, I don't know that that's gonna really distribute that heavily into our district, but. The number keeps going up, so. That's the one that came for us on.
The analogy that I think best describes it is the. Change the policy so the orthopedic surgeon in West Des Moines can have little old grandma in Decorah. Pitching in to pay for his case to go to Dallas.
I'll move that we approve the certified enrollment.
Okay, do I hear the second?
A second.
Hearing a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is item G.
Now we go back to A and O.
Oh, now. Oh, now we're going back up to A. Okay, thank you, Brad. Next is item A. Um. Discussion of the ninety percent owner review set of this school project. Um, last Monday. Um, Dr. Crumman, Carol and I, and many from our school district. Thank you to those who shared, we were on a four-hour Zoom meeting, yeah. Yeah, but, and I thought, how in the world are we gonna talk about some of this for four hours? And we sure that, and I. Was attentive and it was incredible, so I wanted to. Review a little bit, so Carol, can you please share with the board your key takeaways from that? Actuall.
One. Um. Hundred and ninety-seven pages of documents we reviewed, and it's an incredible process that happens with building, you know, a huge building. A, a huge, uh, project like this. Um, we went through, um, electrical plumbing, HVAC, the site plan, uh, you know, the, the actual plan of the building, you know, in detail. And, um, we worked, and it was clear that people like Curtis Johnson had worked extensively with our local engineers and putting together, you know, the, the very best. H X system that we have, we've been working with them on, on the, the site plan and, and from the viewpoint from custodians and from the viewpoint of, of, you know, all, all of the maintenance that he will be in charge of. Um, Chad Elliott has been working with, worked, um, um, with the kitchen to design that kitchen and to, um, sign up on that. So, um, I was impressed with all of the, um, the collaboration that our engineers and architects have, have done with our, um, our school staff. And I think that, um, that we really appreciate all the time that, that they put into that. Um. Adam Riley was there and he helped with details, um, on, on all of the, on the tennis courts and all. Of the other, um, of the, I think, the, of, of gymnasium. Um, just a few details, the tennis court will have post tension concrete and not the asphalt, which if you, like, go to tennis courts, lots of cracks there, which will. Improve longevity, which will cost a little bit more upfront, but will save us money later. Um. Which I don't even know, there are so many details, I'm not so sure where, uh, how this needs to report right now.
This was the first time that we've been able, you know, mostly the key people, Tom, Tom Salhasca with, um, Myron. And Nick and Patty from Emergent, they've been the liaisons collecting questions, um. And then passing those on to these other teams, and this was the first time that we've been able to ask teams directly questions, and it was a great opportunity because. I was, you know, questions were floating at the top of my mind that have come from the public the whole year, and. We could ask specifically, like, why did you plan the playgrounds for this size? And. Um. How much room for there, is there for solar on the roof? And I was really, I was pleased with. Just the volume of professionals involved in this project, but just the immense amount of details, you guys, this is such a big project. This is such a huge project, and I feel so good about where the project is today, um. And I. Now I'd like to, you know, we got to talk a lot about, in addition to solar, talked about water filtration, talked about. Energy efficiency and, um.
One thing that they confirmed that I've been, that people have asked me in emails is about, um. Uh, are all the materials inside the building going to be safe? And they have heard that, that all the material are low, um, B O, B O C, volatile organic compounds. There, so that was a limited amount of, of chemicals, they're off gassing, um, especially on the carpet, I was concerned about, about the carpet. And, um, and they have done their homework to make sure that we're gonna have, um, a safe carpet for our children. Um. And also the carpet square, it's, will be in, in squares, so if there are spills and whatever, they'll be able to replace. Um, pieces of the carpet, yeah. Um.
Mm-hmm. Does the board have any questions? Or any questions they want us to pass on to get answers to?
Uh, the ninety percent plan is so comprehensive, it's almost. It's almost hard to comprehend because of the level of detail, it's like, okay. Look at this page and it's showing you the blueprint from above, and then you're working out the next page is the blueprint from the side, and it's like, okay, I get the gradients of where the scale is coming from, and. I mean. The work that went into it. You already said, Carol, I mean, it is.
So I would just thank you two for dedicating their time. To that process, it's no small moment.
All around, it's gonna be cool with you. Work every minute. Okay, this was the discussion items, so no official action is needed. Next.
Receive a text that. It said plan was ordered down two to five. Personally.
Um, next, item B, approval of engagement letter with dollars and cuny for a geo bond sale. The purpose of, um, this action item. Is so that we can. Have, there's a very strict schedule of dates that we need to follow. Um. To purchase the bond for future construction. Despite the no vote by city council tonight. Um. Two to five. We. Know that we're gonna build this school. And we know that we're gonna build this school as soon as we possibly can. Um. So I. I welcome questions, I know that Tim is not here, but, um, darling, we might be able to help with the questions as they come up regarding schedule and. And the timeline.
Does there need to be any change in the schedule and timeline, given that, I guess, um, that's, we have got these questions here.
Yeah, I think, I mean. If we can do this provisionally. But. Uh, this. May mean that if we proceed as planned. We're paying interest on ten million dollars for another year that we can't do anything with it. In which time, of course, the costs are going to keep climbing. But I. It would seem to me that this is something that. Do we need input from, you know, we could. Authorize it subject to recommendation of a bond council.
So what's the difference in? This is an engagement letter disclosure. For approving this, you know, later down, once we get jumped to G after this, we're talking about approving.
Yeah.
So I mean, is this just? An engagement letter saying we're going with allers and cuny and. Not necessarily approving the sale of the bonds, or?
I think, yeah, I believe that to be the case, so we could. Probably approve that. But we just don't wanna update ourselves to. Selling something and letting the interest clock start.
Yeah, and that's my concern as well, is that.
I'm guessing Tim's probably on his way. Um. The hypotheticals are, there's too much.
Um. Darling, do you have any more information that you are able to share?
I don't, um, I know, you know, that upcoming. Special meeting on Tuesday.
We do.
True.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know about proceeding, because I know we had that newspaper public notice that, um. We had sent just in case, because it's easier to poll than place too late. Um. So we need to. Talk about that too, when we get to that resolution part about not potentially. Placing that in the newspaper, because that explains states as well.
Um. In regards to B itself, um. If we pass this, we start. Paying dollars and cuny for their services. So that would be the. That's, I believe the number in there is fifteen thousand dollars, it's not exorbitant by any amount, but it is an amount, um. And so I. The question in my mind is, if we approve this, are we doing exactly what Ron was talking about, are we starting to spend money? But we're just sitting on it and we can't. We're not at the point of readiness to. Move forward.
Well, I think that. I'm guessing that Tim is on the way to this meeting, and I'm wondering if the board would be. Um, open to. Considering either pausing for a short stretch break.
I would be more than in favor of that.
Absolutely.
Driven straight here from the last.
Right. We'll save, uh, five minutes, great. Thank you.
By chance from Mr., uh, Superintendent, uh, yeah, someone along with you.
I'm. 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 I'm.
Um, welcome back from our break. Um, it's possible that Dr. Crumman is staying for, there was an additional item after the, the vote. Um, so it's possible that he's, he's staying longer of a city council year. So I'd like the, I'd like the board to discuss, um. We could. He just texted. He said he was coming. Yeah.
My sense is that it's okay to. Do the documentation regarding engaging all those to represent us in this, but not. G, the resolution directing the advertisement for sale. We don't know that we want to do that.
And if the board votes not to proceed with this, um. You know, it's, we know the cycle of the minimum days that it takes. Um, I'm just wondering what the. Of, it would mean more special meetings, but I'm not sure if we're missing. I feel like this is. Um, dependent on. Our spring, on the March date.
Just, this is started to say when we would be engaging them. What, does it have a deadline for when we would start the engagement?
That would be whenever we pass the resolution and city signs it.
Okay, so we could go ahead and do this quote on this, on engaging them, and we would not be. Obligated to pay them anything until we actually. Pass the resolution to them, who is going to be the, the bonds for us.
Uh, my reading on it takes it that. Once we enter into agreement with them, we are consulting with them, and so. We would be obligated to pay them, uh, they estimate our fee as fine council would be fifteen thousand dollars, doesn't say when we will pay them.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Uh, I guess it says within thirty days of complete, so we're gonna have to pay them relatively quickly, but.
Well, thirty days after they send us a bill.
Right, and so that's.
Um, we don't know how soon we'll be back in front of city council, that's next week.
Well, tonight verbally, they all. The. Expressed a sense of urgency.
I guess my question is. Do we table this at the moment, knowing we can pass it relatively quickly, followed by. Also moving with item G relatively quickly at the same meeting. On some future. Day of the week.
At a special meeting.
At a special meeting. So.
Okay, I know, I do not know what you. I don't know, but I agree, we're just so up in the air, you know.
Well, we already had a special meeting planned for next, like, it was long. Yeah. But it hasn't been posted.
It hasn't been posted.
Right, but we all had a agreement that we could be there. And. Change the agenda topic, right?
Yeah, on the one hand, we're not gaining anything by signing the engagement letter. Because it doesn't do anything, it's later.
Right.
And so we don't wanna do anything later. Because.
We don't know anything.
Yeah.
No.
So, yeah. Maybe just. Table both of these until. Knowing for multiple well that it would be a special meeting.
If we have to, we could have a special meeting tomorrow through Zoom at noon or maybe for the.
Well, we need to be.
We need. Actually, yeah, yeah, but.
But also by not approving this tonight, that sets back our, the next special meeting that we have scheduled.
Mm-hmm.
In November. By a couple of, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Send them all. Well, if it's not, then I will offer the motion.
And to be clear, you have to offer motions in the affirmative. So you're motioning.
To deny.
Well, now you've got a motion to approve, then when you go to vote, you can vote to deny. Yeah, we just I just came, uh, it's a good reminder, I just came from reading where we spent a lot of time talking about that. So, so yeah, so you could, you'd have to make the motion in the affirmative. I made the motion to approve the agreement with our win, seventy seconds, we have a vote. We say all in favor, I, based on the conversation. We'll probably get more nays, but that would be the affirmative way to do it.
Or no one makes a motion, it just dies.
That was going to be my thought on the issue is if we don't take action, nothing occurs, and so.
I would throw.
And um. Just lost.
That was not net.
Right, and the item is listed as a discussion and possible approval, so I feel like we have discussed. And I'm not hearing a motion to. Okay.
It doesn't exist anymore.
Right, I think we would table it, yeah.
And so now um we are going to go out to.
B.
Item B, which is approval of engagement letters with all learning community for the geo bond sale. We had bumped this down, um, Tim, I had questions for you, I know that we have a tight timeline. I know that tonight's council vote also plays into this timeline. And we, the um, we discussed briefly and then voted to move it down on the agenda. Um, to revisit our previous conversation, we were worried about spending money before we were ready.
So uh, our, uh, B is the engagement letter with dollars and. Sorry, we're walking in late, uh, as you all know.
We discussed that and left it pending with, you know, the, like, the discussion was that's probably safe, but. Do we need to do it?
But there is a payment involved here with a fee from dollars and Cumi, so we. We talked about, do we want to approve this and approve this, the engagement? Now, and start paying that fee or. We don't know when this.
Yeah, um, well, uh, uh, so they've already done a lot of the paperwork, so I imagine we owe them a certain amount of money, I didn't. Until I was on the drive over here, didn't anticipate the no. Um, so we want to engage with dollars and Cumi, so I would recommend we do B. Uh, when we go to borrow the money, that's the question, not knowing when the site plan is going to be approved. We want to borrow the money now, um. There's a lot to consider on that, um, one, one thing I could say is. We uh intentionally, we're only borrowing ten million dollars. And the threshold is if you borrow over fifteen million, you've got three years to get it done. So if we only borrow ten million, that in theory doesn't start the clock on the get it done part of the, of the bond. Um, if we borrow money, then we could have it be part of our, the tax that we're going to start to levy. Uh, and I suppose if we don't borrow it, um, that might make our tax rate look a little. Uh, off for a year or however long it take, um. So there's just, there would be some variables, um, and it kind of depends on how. We have, I don't have a good feel for how long it's going to take us. You get a site plan right now, but uh, um. I would, uh. With the information I have right now, I would say I would approve the engagement letter and start that process. And I would say you can borrow the ten million dollars and have it ready to. To hit the ground running when we go, I, you know, not gonna lie, there, I'm apprehensive about saying that. Um, because uh. I can't tell anyone we're gonna have an approved site plan. So I guess the question I have in mind right now is. Item B in our agenda is listed. That just pairs us up with. Exactly, that says it doesn't force us to make any further action, but it says that they're going to be our partner. Yeah, in getting the bonds when they're ready to get them.
It sets the rates and outlines the responsibilities of the parties, but it does not say. Those will begin upon the signing of this letter, those will begin when we issue the bonds.
Well, it sounds like it's already begun, I mean, they, they.
Well, then they've done the paperwork, I mean, they did the paperwork a lot of times for folks, but yeah, you can gauge a little bit in the process, so.
Well. Sounds like we should go ahead, I'll make the motion to approve our engagement letter with all our Cunys. Cuni for the go bond sale.
I will second that.
We're hearing a motion in a second and we're going to discuss.
Is there a time that this be is for? What time period?
I read it, it only comes up with the.
Thirty days.
The thirty days is, but that's us paying for services. It's.
After they have billed less.
It doesn't state a time period within it that. We're engaging with them, it's saying that we will engage with them to do this, so.
And these fees are for this first ten million, it, then, they, there will be an, another process when we do the next. Portion of it, right?
Okay, we'll move to vote, all in favor, please say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next we're going to item ten, which is.
G, we have a G.
Oh, excuse me, thank you.
Kind of men zipping around.
Choose your own adventure. Approval of, okay, so we're on item G, approval of resolution directing the advertisement for sale, approving the electronic bidding procedures. And approving the official statement.
This is talking about this one. This is where we would say as the board, we're ready to start selling ten million dollars a bond, we're gonna advertise electronically. We're going to, um. We're gonna take bids in, we're gonna open them and accept the lowest, uh, the best rate we can get next, uh. So Tuesday to twenty fifth.
In your opinion, this is something we still go forward with.
Well, I had, uh, uh, I assumed we would and I, um. Have, uh.
You just don't know.
I just got from Travis Squires, our financial advisor, they said, let's stay. I just got from Travis Squires, our financial advisor. They said, let's stay on track with tonight's action items. I'm available if you want to chat. So I'm more than happy to call him if you want me to bring him in that way. Uh, I mean. I did text him and I called and left a message too. I just. Said a potential site plan will be voted down. Should we? Should we continue to borrow the money on Tuesday? And that's what he replied to. Let's stay on track with tonight's actions. So.
So I would be very hesitant to take these steps because the interest will start accruing. Next Wednesday.
I wonder, I'm curious why he would make that recommendation. It's possible that now is the relief suite interest rate. That would be good to lock in. Um.
It all depends on what happens. I mean, if we can. Get some special meetings done with the council and get a site plan approved, then we don't do this today. And then are we? Flipped around, but I I don't know what the right answer is.
I mean, I think. I'm with Ron. I think if we take out the bond and start paying interest on it immediately, we're paying money that we're not. We're just paying an extra amount for the sake of having it ready when it's. Or we can have a special meeting. Post it for twenty four hours, however much we need. Have that special meeting whenever it needs to occur and we can issue the bond. We can start the the process of posting. It would delay things in short term, but I don't think it's going to be a long.
That's my question. And you all, I appreciate. Your flexibility in saying I will share more of my time immediately as needed for you. Thank you. I know that we're all busy. We work. There's stuff to schedule around, but my question is, by not moving forward with this, is that are we missing an important date?
Uh. That would be more contingent on the site plan, of course. Um, I I not knowing, I can't answer that. I I I'd have to ask Travis what we're missing if we don't approve tonight.
I would say if.
If he's willing to take a phone call.
He's willing to take a phone call, so.
I would say if he's willing to, we might as well listen to ideas to say it. Unless anybody disagrees, but.
We have a meeting that we already all have said we can attend next Tuesday. It's not very far from now, so we'll have all had a draft and maybe we.
But if we don't approve this, we won't have.
If we don't approve this, we don't have a meeting on Tuesday.
Well, it would just be a different. But we would still hold our meeting anytime to talk about this item rather than the next step.
But I would throw that. Talk to Travis tonight, first thing in the morning, whatever. And if he says yes, go through with it. We can have a Zoom meeting. At eight o'clock on Wednesday morning, if that's not too late.
That's too late.
That's too late to give it to the newspaper, the public news.
But would that be pushing us by just one? Uh, yeah, we'll push back a week because of that, yeah.
Which I'm guessing we're pushed back at least that anyway with.
We're, we're, we're really tight on this one. This was, uh, you know. It is, it is what it is. I, you know, if it doesn't get approved, we won't put it in the paper and we'll meet next Tuesday.
Is it, is it worth checking with him and seeing why he thinks we should approve this or?
I'm more than happy to call and bring him into the meeting.
Why not? Dial him up.
Okay.
We we do know that it's going to be at least a month before we get a site plan approved. Right?
I don't know.
Where are the city council meetings again? I mean.
I'm sure they. Yeah.
Hey Travis, I'm about to speaker you into a school board meeting. No pressure. So. Your voice will be heard by thousands.
It's not known that.
Can you hear us, Travis? Okay, we're trying to get your, the volume turned up on my phone.
They put it by that.
Nothing's working for me right now. Can you hear us, Travis?
Is it a speaker?
Oh, no. Well, I'm gonna put it on. How about now, Travis?
Fairly.
Okay. One last thing.
Good evening, Travis. This is Cindy Governor. And our board has had um discussion about our item to approve moving forward with this bond process. Having a no vote from our city council tonight, we know that there will take time to get to a site plan that the council will approve. And we want to know the pros and cons of passing tonight's action items.
Yeah, very, very good question. Um, and just kind of to step back in the process and and think through the. Financing plan real briefly here. Um, the geo bond that are voted bonds will be sold in multiple series. Which means not all thirty eight million will be sold at one time. Um, so the easiest way for you to to think of that is we're sort of funding the construction as we go. With the option to sell it all at once. There are a couple advantages that we see to breaking up the debt issuance in the multiple series. Which is related to the interest rate that you will receive. And some of that is related to the time in which you're allowed to spend. The bond money without the threat of owing the IRS any sort of uh portion of your investments. So for example, um, selling less than ten million dollars in a calendar year affords you the ability. To claim a special designation of debt that was commonly called bank qualified. Um, the the easiest way to think of that is that. Certain purchasers of your bonds receive an extra exemption on their federal income tax. Return when they're booking the interest that they receive. Um, it's a incentive for supporting smaller communities. Smaller community borrowings, smaller community projects. And in doing so, it's typical that we would see interest rates on. Portions of that debt that could be anywhere between point one and point two percent lower. And we typically see the value of that more from like the years twelve to twenty uh maturities. So we've structured this first issue to try to take advantage of that uh designation of debt. And in thinking through the size and scope of your project, you probably only have one option to take advantage of that. Because it is by calendar year. So if everything else goes as planned. You know, you may not have the ability to structure the debt so that you can stay under ten million dollars in the calendar. So that's a part of the reason why the financing plan is set up the way that it is. There's another designation that allows you to, uh, if you sell less than fifteen million dollars of debt. In a calendar year, you effectively get three years to spend that money. Without any sort of restrictions from the IRS on spend down. And you have the ability to earn a maximum amount of interest that's available to you without the need to. Rebate any of that interest earnings back to the federal government. Now, if you sell more than fifteen million dollars of debt in a calendar year. You have to meet certain spend downs and have that money spent within two years. So the the goal was to try to avoid that with this first issue, selling more than fifteen million dollars. And also take advantage of the ten million uh special designation. If you decide not to move forward with selling any debt. Today or I mean, within the next month, um, you will not be able. To take advantage most likely of any of the bank qualified debt. But that's just a lower interest rate on ten million dollars worth of of debt of the total project. But keeping in mind that it's likely that you can earn right now about the equivalent of your. Borrowing rate in investment income. So borrowing now shouldn't have a detrimental effect because you should be able to offset. Uh, your interest costs with any sort of investment earnings that you're receiving. And besides that, investment earnings on geo bonds are typically rolled into available project funds. So unable to cover any sort of extra contingencies or potential, um, you know, paying orders or costs. Uh, changes that might happen between now and the time that you bid. Now, if you were a long ways off from having this project designed, developed, ready to bid. And didn't think there was any sort of path forward to bidding the project in the next. Three to four months, it would be pretty easy to say, hey, let's pause and revisit. Um, given where I think you are on the project plan. I'm not sure you gain a lot by pausing, if that makes sense. So a little bit of a monologue there, but I will uh step down and let you ask. Any questions about those components that I was just reviewing with you.
I think probably the big question Travis is, if we don't vote yes tonight. And in the next couple of weeks, things come together. What's the timeline? We just happen, we'd have, we'd have, we could still do it and get all those benefits, but we have to do it quickly in December.
You you will have a a very hard time of getting everything completed by December.
Okay.
Whether or not we will approve it tonight or by December or.
Well, eventually you have to finish the entire financing process. Which includes a sale of bonds. A period of time for bond counsel to draft all the legal documents. And then a period of time to get to closing. So we're probably already sort of on the edge. Of available time. Now. If you chose to wait, you know, and sell. Right after Thanksgiving, um, it's. Possible that it could still get closed, but it would probably put a little additional stress. On your bond council to do it that way. Not not impossible. Uh, but it but it would be a a little bit difficult. Now, where you're at on the process right now is you have a. A notice to direct advertisement for sale. Um, what that means is that you're putting notice out for the bonds to be sold. Next Tuesday at ten AM. However, that is just the public notice. There is still the ability. For us to not send out documents electronically. If, you know, after consultation with bond counsel, it's determined to not move forward. And that you should delay a couple of weeks. Just understand that if you. Delay to sell right after Thanksgiving, a week later. Um, you know, there may need to be an additional special meeting to ratify a new uh. Schedule for the sale date to happen. It's probably an additional special meeting and. Will create a little bit more of a time crunch on the the bond council side. To get that closed. Is it impossible? No, just uh just want to kind of relay the realities that it does. Create probably the the tightest timeframe that bond council would typically be willing to consider. For that type of financing.
Let me ask you a hypothetical. What if? We end up losing the entire next construction season? And we're not going to be spending any of these funds until the spring of twenty seven. Would we be making a mistake by borrowing that money now?
Um. So let's let's define mistake. So would you potentially lose out? Or pay additional interest cost? Um, you're gonna pay additional interest costs. The question is. Will the rate be at such a rate that you're able to reinvest the deposit at the same time where you don't? Run into any uh what I call negative arbitrage, meaning you borrow at a rate higher than you're investing. Now, my my initial thinking is that they should be pretty close to each other. Um. But you know, going back to my kind of lead off on spending down bond proceeds. Um, you do have three years to spend this money. The ten million. The question would be, we would not be proceeding with selling the next round of debt. Until you would get furthered on the lines of the project costs. In fact, we, you know, the plan was. Get this in place that allows you to cover off some of the funds that you've already advanced out of your, you know, for architect, design fees, et cetera. Reimburse those. And then you would have the start money for the construction process. And then we would ultimately not sell the next round of debt until you had no construction cost in place. So that was, that was the original plan, whether that now we would sell. Twenty eight million next year or eighteen next year and ten the following year. Still had not come to you with presenting those options. The main point was to get this first ten million in place, take advantage of. The bank qualified rates that are available. Structure the debt so that we have maturities that maximize that value. And then have that money ready to go forward. So I understand you got a little bit of a curve ball with approval of site plans. Sometimes those work through fairly quickly. Sometimes they take a little bit more time in negotiation. I would assume that there would be a pretty significant incentive. To try to get this worked out, otherwise it's, you're not really worried about. Losing a construction cycle, you're going to be more worried about the fact. That you lost inflation on your project. Things that would help with inflation, although it's pretty minor. Selling the debt earlier puts the money in the bank. All of the investment earnings on that money then do become available. Um, for project funds. We do think from an interest cost standpoint, you know, that's coming from a levy of taxes. If you've got the ability to still meet your obligations and tax rate promises, you know, given where we're at right now. So I don't see the risk on the side of not being able to meet the tax rate promise due to the debt cost being too high. Um, what I would be worried about in your shoes are if it does get delayed. You've really got no sense of protection in terms of the construction cost inflation, other than. You know, potentially coming back with utilizing a little bit more sales tax in the future. Um. Any, any investment earning, let's say, let's say this money sat for a year with nothing with it. Um, ten million dollars times four percent should give you. Four hundred thousand dollars. I know that math right in my head. Four hundred thousand dollars of investment income available uh to you. So it offsets a little bit, but when we're talking a thirty eight million dollar project, it's not. Ten million isn't gonna close the gap on that. It just lightens the load a little bit.
I don't think we're in danger of beating this behind.
I don't see it there, but I also am a little concerned about having just do this vote and have that that needs us to be in the newspaper this week. That we're selling, is that right?
We can sell them next Tuesday.
Right. It would get a couple of. Feels to me a little bit like a slap in the face to the. The council. I mean, I I do want to. Take their, I do want to take their concerns about this project seriously.
I do also.
And I do want to um be respectful of the process and work as much as we need to together with them to. Um. To move this forward. That's what we all want and that's what they want too. And it 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 feels a little funny to me to go ahead and go through with this right now and have this in the paper this Thursday before we really had time to. Even start working through the issues with the city council.
I think if we explain, if we do decide to go through and we explain why to keep the ten million in this calendar year. I think we can explain that to them and, you know, and still work with them. I I I think that's easily explainable, but I'm not saying that's a reason to do it or not to do it, but.
Yeah, and and. Yeah, and, and I'll just, I'll just weigh in real, real quick here. Um. When, when you guys set your budget back in the spring, you, you put a levy of taxes in place. Declaring your intention issue debt anyway, during this fiscal year. So that, that's really just following through. I mean. At the end of the day, you will need to sell some debt before we get to February or March of next year anyway. Uh. Because you already have a levy of taxes in place to collect on debt service funds for an issue this year. So the timing of these two items being so close together. Would give the impression that they're linked, that they're really not linked. And we've been working this. Timeline for a few months now. It just so happens that they came together. We had always said we would be. Bidding this project when you got to the ninety percent design phase. On the project, which you guys have reached. So it, it really would still be consistent for you to sell the debt. Now, I'm not trying to convince you that you have to do that. I'm just trying to give you the backstory that it would not be inconsistent and we see a lot of projects. With debts sold before the projects are bid. Um, usually just a portion, right? We typically don't see. An entire project funded or financed before. When it's come in with G O bonds, just because you, you never know, right? Bits came in way over budget. You, you would be stuck if they came in under budget, then you would have oversold that. So there's, there's typically a component that sits out there. That's not obligated until the project's good, but it's not uncommon to have some sort of. Construction in play or debt in place. Um, in fact. I think, uh, there's another district that just approved bonds. This November that is getting ready to sell bonds in order to take advantage of this. Ten million dollar B Q yet this calendar year. So they've been on kind of rush mode to do it and they won't be anywhere close to having their project bid. Um, at, at that point in time.
So we are at that ninety percent set stage. We need to be good stewards of public money. I see a lot of advantages of moving forward. I acknowledge fully that there are concerns about the site plan. But the site plan is a small piece of the overall project and a small piece of the overall thought. Um. I. I felt, or I heard a sense of urgency from the council tonight. That's my perspective, which everyone has a different perspective. But I. I can't imagine not spending this debt within three years.
Based upon the explanations that we've heard, I would concur that. Given the fact that we can make money off of the money.
Right.
That hopefully breaks even on the interest that we're paying. I think this excellent, excellent explanation has led me to a strong conclusion that we should proceed.
I agree with the financial rationale. But I'm nervous about, nervous might not be the right word, but the implications of what we're doing. Um, I do, I think they set kind of a weird. We're moving forward on something, but we don't have approval for it yet. Uh. I don't wanna set us at loggerheads. That's my fear, um, that. I wish the last four or five minutes hadn't happened. Um. I feel okay about it from a financial perspective, but from a, we're, we're taking the money out because we're. We've got the, the process to ninety percent and that's why we're taking the money out. It's like, no, no, I actually. I don't wanna take the money out because of that. I wanna take the money out so that we're prepared, able to do it. Making wise financial decisions. I think that's the part that has to be very clear here is. We, we wanna, we want collaboration. We wanna get to the endpoint where we're building the school. I know that's, that's all of our reason. We want the school.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Just don't want the perception to be where.
Making assumptions.
Right. That's, that's my fear.
Okay.
Um. So that's not, that's not a reason to go.
I can make one clarification on the ninety percent. That was the when we will start executing on the financing timeline. Uh, because we viewed it as budget needed to get more set. So all, all I was trying to say is just because you hit ninety percent doesn't mean go forward. But it was kind of a threshold that we said, this is when we'll start doing the process. So. If that added confusion, my apologies for that, that component.
Travis, can we go back to the timeline again? If we put, if we waited a, a week. And did the same process that we're looking at right now, but we set it back a week, could we still get this done in twenty twenty five?
With some begging and pleading of your bond attorney, yes. It just, is you're just forcing them on a tighter timeline. You may need an additional special meeting in there. Um, I think it can still get done if the sale is delayed a week. If it's delayed two weeks, it's not, it's not probably possible.
Which next week's Thanksgiving?
No, I mean, yeah, we're back to the next Tuesday. We still have the Tuesday meeting, but the paper is not gonna happen until the Tuesday following, which is December.
I would put it in the Thursday, December fourth.
Yeah, I mean.
Here, here's one other option, if you guys would, if you wanna entertain one. Um, there's two steps to getting bids. Um. One, one step is this formal notice of sale, which is part of what you're approving tonight. What that does is there is a requirement in Iowa code that says any G O bond, school bond. Has to give notice, uh, not more than twenty, not less than four days, uh, via paper. For a notice of bond sale. Effectively. It doesn't really set the sale. I mean, it's a legal requirement with the state of Iowa that sets the sale. But the way that you're gonna receive bids is by through an electronic bidding platform called Parity. Um, and all the investors submit a bid if the bid parameters are set up. Given a lot of this information is pretty fresh for you all right now. Um, we don't have to send those documents. To the online bidding platform. I mean, ideally it would have been tomorrow. But if we waited and sent them Wednesday morning, you would still be okay. You don't have a four and twenty day notice there. It's just given a reasonable amount of time for people to get it on their bond calendars, which usually means. By Wednesday at noon. If you turned around and helped. We, you went forward with the resolution tonight. Which would authorize the notice to be in the paper. You could meet again Wednesday morning. And have a little bit more time to deliberate and decide. Do we actually still wanna receive bids on next Tuesday morning? At which point you could just give us direction that we're either going to send the documents out to investors. Or we're gonna sit on them. You will still have a notice of sale on the paper. Which means that somebody could show up. And throw a proposal in. But they wouldn't have any documents to bid on, other than the notice of sale. And you could simply at noon that day, if anything is received, reject all bits. So that would give you an option to not feel like. You're under the, under the stress of making a decision. Right now about this, you could move forward with this action. And then still reconvene to discuss. The ultimate, you know, whether we say discuss, uh, financing timeline or whatever it is you wanna. Put on the agenda for a Wednesday morning meeting. And decide if you would like to move forward with us distributing the electronic documents or get. We can sit on those and not, and not certainly, we had to do that earlier this year for another transaction that. Ran into a, they found an audit issue kind of late in the process. We'd already advertised for bid. So we did not end up sending documents out and having the sale available to be submitted on the electronic bidding platform. So that would be an alternate option if you guys wanted it.
I, I think the, maybe I'm wrong, but I think the difficulty with that Travis is it's still in the paper and it still looks like we're, we're moving ahead. Despite the challenges and what we'd like to be able to do is say, yeah, we'd like to keep everything on process. We know we, although the site plan was voted down, we did hear. That the city council is willing to work with us and we are committed to do that. Um. But until we start that process, we, we don't know how long that, that's gonna take. We, you know, I heard a bunch of people say, I'll be tomorrow, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll be anytime and. It's crazy that they said that. I'm not saying that they won't. It's just, you know, getting, sometimes it's difficult to get everybody together for a meeting and. And how quickly that could really happen, I don't know. So we don't wanna sabotage ourselves. By having it look like we're, we're not going to engage. So we can either make a public statement, we could. If we did approve it, we could make a public statement. I can let the council know. We got a good newspaper reporting that says. There was absolutely, there was, there was anxiety on the borders we have, but the board, board does, you know, board voted to do this. Based on the financial advice, but understood that, um. We're not, not to try to pay ourselves into a corner or do something that, that implies that we're not gonna, uh, engage in earnest conversations with city council.
Yeah, and, and my only point of going on that last, I tried to make sure you understand that it is one additional option available. So I didn't want you to not know that that is a, a further option. I, I, I don't necessarily have a strong opinion on this, other than. I think you will have difficulty of getting it, the ten million is bank qualified. Is it the end of the world? No, but it's also something that, based on a city council. Approval action to delay something, even though they said in good faith effort. They're talking about, I mean, that's a real taxpayer cost for your patrons to have higher interest rates. On this first ten million of debt. And so that, that's the only consideration that I think, if you think through as a council members. If they knew that, you know, they might even say, well, yeah, just go ahead and sell it. We'll work together and get it figured out. I'm not saying that that's, they'd say it exactly like that, but you know, doubt that they're in a, in a position where they would want. You not have access to bank qualified debt because the approval didn't happen. And if, if it sounds like they wanna. Work in a good faith effort to get this figured out as quick as possible.
I think that's the question we need to talk about. What does this timeline look like? I, I have no, I, I have no idea. I know. And so are we looking at, to his point, are we looking at days, three, four months? Because his original. Very beginning of the call, the orig. The advice he gave at the beginning is it's gonna be three or four months, maybe. Don't at this point. But. I think perception is the key on anything that happens. I heard city council say they want a new school. We're saying we want a new school. But we aren't meeting in the middle yet. So how far apart are we? How long is it going to take to get there? That's an unknown, but I think that's the. That's the unknown. It's the question we have to try and assess for ourselves.
Anybody in the quarter?
Well, again, you know, I've said this earlier. I personally am in favor of being good stewards with, with money. I forget about how far we are in the project, so I'm a little bit of a, not prepared this time. And having strong, having a strong public statement that in, if the board would be interested in drafting or. Unanimously, considering unanimously signing a public statement explaining our position in the paper. I think that would be extremely meaningful.
The biggest reason I would be, and for it is just the interest rate and the, and I would. And I would hope we could explain why we did that.
Do we know the interest rate?
If you have that ten million in a bank note, he talk is.
Do we know what the interest rate is going to do?
We wouldn't know that till the bids come in.
Well, I, I think what he's saying is because of the incentive to get it done in twenty five.
We got a better person, we got a better offer on what the rate is.
One or two, one point one or point two is that. We know that just because of tax law, we would get.
We'd, yeah, get whatever that number is, hopefully.
Is that correct Travis? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, it's, it's a bidding, if you bid a bank qualified debt and a non-bank qualified debt on the same day, same issuer, same rating. She would typically see an advantage that's been showing up point one to point two percent on the maturities that we're selling. Um. And that's a tax law. We're not, in terms of, you know, do you get a better deal by waiting, you know? I think, I think the one thing to consider is like, yes, it sounds like you will see. Potential side rate movement over the next six to twelve months. However, the market is tracking those things as well, right? This is more tied to what's happening with the treasury market. So you don't really know. I mean, you could, you could make it say that, well, we think rates will be lower anyway, so. We're just gonna wait, right? But that is a position. But in terms of looking at tax law and when to take advantage of. You know, the, the facts would be you would save money by being bank qualified versus not bank qualified. Ten or under versus over ten. And it's, it's likely most of the rest of that will be over ten. This is kind of your one opportunity. Uh, that we see for it to be bank qualified, which does hold some, you know, value for. Local bank bidders in the transaction as opposed to. Non-bank qualified debt that might be more mutual fund oriented. It's not to say that banks don't buy non-bank qualified debt. They. You know, your, your banks are certainly supportive, they're in the community, so I'm not anticipate they wouldn't buy. It's just they won't get that. Advantage that also then gets passed on to the district.
Yeah, I don't think my issue is with the financial aspects of what this, the ramifications are. It's more the social.
Do you think we can explain our reasoning?
I think there's probably a great way to explain it. I mean. We want to work with city council to get this ironed out. We wanna figure out where. The crossroads, where the crossroads are so that we can get this to happen because. They said it publicly tonight. Everybody has heard, well, I guess I don't know the last one, but the first four that said they were voting no, I heard them say they. They wanna see this new school. They're invested in it too, but. I, I. Going out on a limb and saying that we can find a way to meet in the middle, because it sounds like we both wanna meet there. I hope they would understand that from a. Maybe we don't hit. Some arbitrary date when we're starting construction, but maybe it's the next month or whatever and. We're prepared to move when the timeline comes together.
Yeah, that's my perception as well. And that's how we began this conversation. While there's no way to know. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can work hard to get this resolved.
With that being said, I would make a motion that we go ahead with the bond sale. And communicate our intentions and our reasoning. With the city council prior to the paper coming out with that information. Just to let them know our thinking of why we're doing it and with the rate. Um.
Making motion for a resolution?
And with the rate of, um, a rate thing, so. And I will make the motion. Resolution directing the advertisement sale of not to exceed ten million dollars in general bond appli. Obligation, school bonds, series twenty twenty five, approving the electronic bidding procedures and approving official statement.
I will second that, but leading into discussion. Good luck explaining this conversation to the general public.
I'm not sorry about explaining to the general public.
In a second, so.
I think Ron mentioned a discussion there, yeah.
Yeah, I wanna make a motion, exactly, so we can go into discussion, and. This is not saying something simple that will be understood broadly by the general public. So our work will be cut, cut out for us to explain why, or actually. Your work will be cut out for you to explain why. So that was my second, I'm, I'm not arguing.
Thing that could, I think the best thing we can do as a board right now for public perception is to have a unanimous joint statement. Signed by the board in support of the project.
I, I'm not for this, I'm gonna vote no one. So it will be then.
I mean, and I, the unanimous part, I was talking about the, a joint statement, which is a separate, a separate thing.
Yeah, coming back around to the front end of it, I think. Our first order of business, maybe not first, but one of our first orders of business needs to be. When can we meet with city council? Maybe that's in small groups, it's two and three, so that we're not having a jamal, but. All of us being in the room at the same time might be helpful too. I don't know which is gonna be more beneficial, but maybe we can get started as soon as possible and.
I worry about minorities, like who's chosen to be in the room and those minority voices carrying the whole. Perception of the project, so.
It, that would be the reason for having everyone in the room together, yeah.
Um, okay, so that's a different.
With the motion in the second, I am, I made the motion just on the financial advice. And whatnot, and then, like I said, making a statement more so to city council and city administration to approve. Not to approve, to explain why the decision was made, not as like a, not so they take it as a slap in the face for lack of better words. And if we don't make that sale. Obviously, we're just giving up a, um, an interest rate and we can borrow all the money in twenty twenty-six.
And again, remember if we, if we set, if we approve this tonight, we could meet next week.
It would have to be Wednesday, or Tuesday, yes.
We have a meeting scheduled next week. And we could say no at that time after we, these initial. Meeting, um, outreach to, we'll know more, we'll know, we'll know more by noon next Tuesday.
Yeah, what, and what I would say is if we get to next Tuesday and take bids. And there is a thought that there's a rejection of it, that, that is a, a very. Bad situation financially, because you will receive good, good faith bids. From, from investors and rejection of those bids would be. Very detrimental to your future sales of debt. So we just need to make a decision.
Okay.
Before you got to next Tuesday.
Yeah, I think the thing we were talking about earlier was. We can put it in public, like, put it in the newspaper, but we don't put the details into the.
Electronic.
The electronic bidding process so that it, it kind of sits there.
And we can pull it, if you get to Friday, if there's, you guys meet or have a meeting, get anything going jointly. And there's reservations from the majority of the board to wait, then you could meet again and direct us to pull it. That would need to be done with, ideally by the end of this week.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel good about that either. Yeah, and it's in the paper, it would be in the paper, I was gonna say, so I think.
Yeah, I think. We're thinking maybe two separate lines of, of thought here. One is, do we take out? Advertisement, we start the loan cross, the bond process, the bid process. And the other line of thought is, how do we make sure that we start this communication with the city?
Yeah.
And start.
Yeah.
Working that.
Yeah.
To the force.
Because any, and it will all start with communication, but whatever changes we make, we do need to have an architect. We do, we do all that, I mean, it all takes time. And we know that it is taking, it's taking a long time to do the plans already and for him, he will, he will have to take time to go back and redo. Plans, there will need to be changes made. And I just think that we need to respect the process and, um, and take it one step at a time.
My brain is getting a little muddled here. Can you just say what it is that you're, I'm not sure I've wrapped my mind around this. You wanna not.
Approve that.
Approve the thing.
Correct. I don't want it to be going into the newspaper this Thursday that we're already jumping on, onto some bonds.
The other question I have, and it's a little bit larger than. When do we think we would need to be paying for things? Say that we start the construction project in. September instead of June, I'm picking some numbers out of the hat here, but the dates out of the hat, but. Could we get our ten million, uh. Bank qualified loan, would we need more money before twenty fiscal twenty-seven, I guess? I have no. I don't know anything on the funding side on what we're gonna need to pay when.
Yeah, I, that's, uh, it's a great question, it's one of those unknowable things, we got that, we'll have a payment schedule. And not knowing when we're starting, I can't tell you what that'll be, so, um. Yeah, I, like, there's so many unknowns right now and.
Yeah, I mean, would ten get us through whatever we might need in fiscal twenty-six and then we take out. Whatever that next number is, he was talking about ten and eighteen.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, you know, one of the first things they're gonna do is redo the. Storm sewer and I imagine that'll be pretty crazy and, you know. I just wanna get to a point where we have fifteen million dollars to pay and go and borrow ten million, that kind of thing.
Right.
Uh, we've already had some soft costs that we've just covered. We've covered some of the soft costs generally, and then we can, uh, if I remember that correctly Travis, we can reimburse ourselves. For some of the initial costs that we paid, um, so we've covered some of it, but obviously, we're not covering. Two million dollars for this stuff.
So that would help. Financially this fiscal year, or, you know, by making this. Move, in this calendar year, the, the benefits are. I'm taking advantage of the incentives for. And it also can help cover, as Tim mentioned, soft costs that we've already incurred.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Architectural costs.
Yeah, 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 we've already, we've already had bills and, and paid bills to, to emergent and minor.
I think on third term, this is on tax rate, and so. Okay, we said we were going to take this money out, if we don't take it out.
Oh, we're, yeah, we'd like, if you, I'm sorry, yeah, we've been, we've been collecting taxes to pay, we aren't.
We haven't taken out yet, which is problematic.
Yeah, yeah, we're collecting, we've got the debt service levy in place right now for this debt.
Yeah.
So at some point in time, we're gonna, this year, we're gonna issue debt.
Um, so that we don't, we're sitting on taxpayer money, which, that doesn't feel good to me.
Yeah.
I agree.
And, 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 uh, yeah, I think you guys have outlined it, you know, the, the other thing is if we don't vote this, and. Though, yes, we know we're gonna probably cost the taxpayers, uh, percent on interest. But Carol, I can fully appreciate, uh, the public perception, I think there's. I don't have a good recommendation on this one, um. Other than, even though Travis maybe isn't super excited, he has said. That if we came back to him in a week, we might be able to get something, maybe we have a better feel in a week's time. Uh, whether we're at with city council.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, you would have a week.
Um, that week has two holiday days in it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you, I think you take a week, and I think bond council will obviously be understanding of your situation, um. There's also a component here of potential legal advice that they may wanna offer up. That you're not able to really take into account this late in the game, so. I don't wanna sound like the guy who's, you know, pushing you one way or the other. Just wanna make sure we're understanding the options. If you, if you, then you got a motion second, if you vote to table this item, for example. Um, to either later this week or early next week. Um, you could still have it in the paper, or will the paper run on?
Good, on Thanksgiving, yes, the paper will run on Thanksgiving, I've got it from a good source.
It comes out a day later.
Which means you could sell on. December first, December, um, second are days that are available for selling bonds, I'd probably. Lean towards the, the second at this point, given that I'm coming right off the holiday. Maybe not as good investors, so you could still do the same Tuesday, ten AM with a new board meeting. Um, and, you know, if that gives you some time to, you know, get some opinions from. City council if you want them, or feel that out. Could make some sense, I'll be able to run it by your bond attorney, it could also make some sense, um. So I, I can, I can understand the hesitation.
I do too.
And if you do think the project's going to be delayed a full year. Then the, the board member is correct, then, you know, everything's just reset back here, you probably could do ten million next year and. Fifteen year after that, and then ten year after that, or fifteen year after that as well, so it's, it's not like you can't. Piece it together, and have a bank qualified option. The one thing I would know though is, selling now does give you the ability to earn that investment income. Not that it's quote unquote found money, but in terms of project dollars, it sort of is. Um, those are dollars that would be beneficial towards your future project if the project does become more expensive because of. Missing a construction cycle and hating construction inflation.
I've always understood arbitrage to be a negative thing, I don't know, that's something we really wanna engage in.
So we have a motion in a second.
But that does not mean that we can't still vote five zero against.
If I vote five zero against it, you could make a motion to table it.
Well, just go around and if it, you know.
And I, I don't have a problem with tabling either, if we wanna see what a week gives us.
I, I would be in favor of that. It sounds like we have a tiny bit of.
Yeah, we have a little time here.
So we've had a motion in a second, and by voting no, it's not taking action tonight, and we can set a special, a special video.
At this point, we have to vote on the motion, you just don't have to vote yes.
And a clarification and question on. Rules would be, we can take up the same thing at a future date. It doesn't have to be different. Right, but the thing we're doing. Do the same two meetings in a row or can it? We voted down this meeting, bring back the exact same thing in a week and vote it yes.
Yes, you can, yeah.
We're going with yes?
What you can.
They, I, it might be, might be better, uh, not having our attorney here, if. We can also make a motion to table it, and second that motion and approve that, then we wouldn't have any guesswork, uh.
But then we can't do that until we vote this down.
Uh, I think you could make a motion stable right now.
I think we could table it at the present situation and it comes back exactly the way it is.
With a motion in a second.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to amend my motion to table this. Till further, further conversation.
I, I, I don't think you have to amend your motion, I think you could say, I'd like to make a new motion, I'd like to table it, you get a second, and then you get everybody agreeing it's tabled. Potentially that's opted out.
We didn't have to vote on it.
Well, the tabling would supersede the vote.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to table this discussion.
Do we wanna frame that really clearly though? We're tabling until Tuesday. I, I don't know that I, I'm, I'm probably jumping in the middle of motion in a second.
It was not a second, so Brad, Brad, yeah, Brad made a motion to table this item.
Without, I'm, I'm still concerned that everybody got a motion second on the table. We take a vote on that before we can then move on to table.
That, that might be the cleanest way to do it, um, just for all records with a motion as second. Mo- emotion can be made, it can die for lack of second.
But it's already been seconded.
And then emotion can be amended, but because it's been seconded. Um, it might be cleanest, and I'm not an expert on. Robert's rules of law.
I'm gonna make a recommendation, we see if there's anybody in the audience who's newly elected to the board that has an opinion on this.
I'm only saying this because the city council literally just did this, they had standing motion second. Superseded with the table, the item was tabled.
Right.
So I just witnessed it, they, because they, they came to the same conclusion, they couldn't decide, they wanted to table. Without taking an action on the item, so they tabled it. Without having to withdraw or vote on the standing.
And their attorney was there.
Yes.
So my motion is still up there to table. I, I was still saying, I think you also made a second motion to table.
Right.
I will second the motion to table. So we're done, but, uh, technically we have to vote on tabling as well.
We. We do have to vote on, on tabling, but it, there is no discussion after.
Correct.
Just second motion, table. Okay, so we'll call for a vote.
So discussion.
There was some, you can't have discussion after tabling.
Perfect.
So after, there was a motion to table in a second, all in favor, roll call.
No, we don't.
All, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposing sign. Motion to table carries.
Alright, so it's been tabled Travis, thanks for your time tonight, I will be very much.
Then I'll do it.
Thank you Travis.
Yeah, thank you all. Sorry if I was a little disorganizing my thoughts.
I, 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 I provided both, both sides to the story. Thank you.
So, the, the next item on our agenda is item. N, however, um, this was tabled by city council tonight.
We'd be tabled that already before we.
Yeah.
We are.
This was tabled before I came into the room.
Or you got to.
We tabled it before we went.
We tabled A or B and G, that's listed B and G to the bottom below N.
Yeah, so. Before, below N.
You did M, you tabled N, then you went to G. I think we just, somebody said we're tabling then, but I don't think we ever voted on it.
Did anything with the.
Did vote on it, you just tabled it.
I don't know that we've tabled.
I don't think that we had a second.
I think we, I think we did M and we jumped back to B and G.
Correct.
And we actually didn't do N in the order, but there was originally a statement of M, so I've. I think there's.
Okay.
Maybe some wiggle room in terms of now talking about N.
I would like us to talk about N. Um, I, the action, or this was tabled by a city council tonight. Um, while I, this is on our agenda, I, the purpose of this being on the agenda was to. Just share a collaborative spirit to provide lights for tennis, we've talked about community use of the tennis sports and. Um, this had suggested that tennis lights be included. Um, I, I think more communication needs to happen overall, so I personally am not interested in discussing making a decision on this item tonight.
But, we're opposed a motion to table this like everything else.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go second that motion, okay, there's no further discussion, the motion is tabled, we'll move to a vote, to approve the table meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Motion carries. We're tied in ten, the superintendent's report.
Um, well, um, about the stuff that's in my report. We have a construction timeline, which of course. Now, uh, we'll have to. That's up in the air, of course. Uh, we did have a scheduled three day walk through with downtown staff, uh. With Victor's team, um. Yeah, so the third, we'll have to talk about what makes sense. Probably time to get to that. Um. Energy conservation policy, I just made some other links, all the stuff is found and then Chris was very excited to. Share how, um, much money we're saving by with the, the movement of the propane buses.
Right.
So.
Financial report is on the agenda, but there was a similar report included, and I know that there was an email today.
There's an email, just, uh, it wasn't the financial part, it was just kind of anecdote notes from Joe, so we'll work on getting a, um. Financial report out to the board as we can.
And we are at the agenda, so we'll call the meeting agenda. Thanks for getting it for.
I ask for clarification, uh. To, we're gonna meet Tuesday. That's what we're saying.
We have that. By it's scheduled, I mean personally, we've set time for that. We continue to hold that for now and we'll, you know, Tim will be attached about.